Tim Cooley. David Gerhart.
Here.
Mike Flackerty.
Here.
BD Nunnery.
Here.
Brooke Roberts.
Here.
Don Douglas.
Cheers.
At every full quorum, we'll... Michael. Will you do the invocation, please?
Oh my God, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for this opportunity for us to be here. God, thank you for the people who are here, care about the community that we live in, that you've given us to live in. I pray that you're with each one of us, with our council as they make decisions for the future of this community that we hold dear to us. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Everyone, please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so go down there, agenda, the next we have listed is visitors. I have some proclamations that we're going to present. The first one is to the soccer team. Coach Burtsch. If you girls wait right there, I'll call you up and you all come up and stand right here in front of us, okay? Elizabeth Burtsch. See if you look that way, because he'll take pictures. Ciara Proff.
She is not here.
Not here, okay. Haley Fitzpatrick. Embry Gullett. Skylar Hackworth. Gillian Kidd. Kristen Mitchell. Tabitha Mitchell.
We got a few that are PY, I believe.
Yeah, somebody said the soccer was a smart kid, so they... Michaela Uzli. Uzli, I'm sorry, Uzli. They look that way. They look that way, yes. Shay Robinson. Hey Rose, where you at? Come here, Aunt Rose. I've known her family a long time. Chelsea Simmons. Haley Shepherd. Michaela Sloan. Hannah Stratton. Dolly. Let me tell you, she's got some good hands on her. That's why I made some great plays. Annabelle Trustee.
Not here.
Mackenzie Wilby. And Arrington Wright. Hold on, you guys come back here. I'll try to get them to start to read off now. Now, if you girls, get a picture for them, or y'all don't know about that, do. Whereas, the 2017 Pressburg High School Lady Black Cats Soccer Team won the 15th Regional Tournament for the first time in school history. And whereas the Lady Black Cats with a record of 17, three, and three of the 57 district champions, a 15th Regional Champion, appeared in the state tournament for the first time in the program's history. Whereas the Lady Black Cats are coached by Paul Burchett Jr. and Assistant Coach Andy Pedley. And the team players are, and I already know them off as I give them out individually. Whereas the Pressburg High School Lady Black Cats are to be commended for their quality program, hard work, and dedication that has made their team successful. And now therefore, I L S Stabilizer Mayor of the City of Pressburg hereby encourage everyone to join me in congratulating each team of the 15th Regional Champions, the Pressburg Lady Black Cats Soccer Team. Who's going to give the speech? Coach, I do have one for you also. Coach, congratulations. All right. Coach Bussel? You have some cheerleaders out there?
Yes.
All right, take them inside. Coach Bussel, I've got one for you. I'll let you come up first, and then we can start placing where you want it, okay? Hannah Compton? Emily Hall? Isabella Harlow? Sarah Hunt? I started laughing at her. They look that way. With the camera. See the top of her?
Yeah.
They'll stay up here. Camera out. Isabella Tecklin. Madison Jarvis. Caitlin Johnson. Gillian Kidd, that's a soccer player.
She's a daughter.
That's right, she's gone through it too. Ashley Little. Abby Poe. All right. Shay Robinson. Now, you got two. Michaela Spears. Smile a little bit. Abby Wilks. Madeline Stanball. Cassie Griffin. Madison Wilby. Yeah, that's how you guys have them. She'll smile. Mackenzie Wilby. Max Back. Uh, Rihanna Bussel. Caitlin Butler. Macy Burtfield. And Morgan Davis. Now, I gotta tell you all something. As these girls are walking up, they're going... Licking their teeth, licking their lips, so they get that good smile on them. All right, I'm going to read one of them, as you girls get in a good photograph position there. Whereas, the 2017 Pressburg High School varsity cheerleaders are the regional champions in the medium division of the 15th region Kentucky High School Athletics Association's competitive cheer competition. And whereas the Pressburg High School varsity cheerleaders are coached by Tanya Bussel and the cheerleading team, that's all of my listing tonight. Whereas the Poplison High School varsity cheerleaders are to be commended for their quality program, hard work, and dedication that has made their teams... Pressburg, I'm sorry. Whereas the Pressburg High School varsity cheerleaders are to be commended for their quality programs, hard work, and dedication that has made their team successful. And now therefore, I L S Stabilizer Mayor of the City of Pressburg hereby encourage everyone to join me in congratulating each member of the 15th Regional Champions, the Pressburg High School Varsity Cheerleaders. I was going to add that for competition, you all went to the Expo Center and competed with everybody from the region in Park. Saying about what I was going to say, but I said, "Girls, thank you all, congratulations." We got so much to say, so tell them that. All right, they do. Good luck. BD? Yeah, BD gets one for a figure. All right, these two are for, uh... Selena?
She's in Hall.
Huh? Selena? Are you, are you in Montana out there? All right. All right, we got Montana. Y'all are going on each side of the table. I showed you what we got. That's what you got. It's a proclamation for both of you all. Uh, just give y'all a rundown of what happened here. We had a rock that was used as a, the wrong form of media. These girls contacted me, volunteered, went out and painted on their own. We got a nice little scenario now. It's got a good background to it, and a lot of pictures have been taken out of it. So, Selena? Montana? If you'd like me to borrow one, I might read it. Unless you want to.
No, go ahead.
You don't? All right, whereas the city of Pressburg strives to maintain, promote, strives to maintain and promote the creativity and the beauty that resides in the region of Appalachian Mountains. And whereas the city of Pressburg is home to the Painted Rock, an historical piece of our landscape, and pride of the citizens of Pressburg located here at the head of the Shersecant Mountain Trail System. And whereas Selena Valencia, and that will be Montana on hers, saw a need to repair damage done to the rock and spent her time to work with Montana Porter to create a new work of art that will continue to maintain the beauty that is Pressburg. And now therefore, I L S Stabilizer Mayor of the City of Pressburg do hereby recognize Selena Valencia in her role as an artist and citizen of Pressburg, and pay honor to Selena Valencia and Montana Porter.
They had plans for the backup too, when the weather got cold.
Weather, weather change. Another case of, what's really cool is they had their kids that I was working with a couple times.
Uh, they went out there, they went out there with us after, but yeah.
We thank you all so much, because it's really, a lot of people take pictures off of it around it, because it's got a great backdrop on it. So, we really do appreciate it. Thank you all a lot.
Thank you.
All right, one more. Leslie Hines. Leslie, for those of you who don't know, Leslie, we had a big pumpkin that was donated to us. It's actually a record pumpkin, and it was award-winning, an 09 yard. And she did Floyd the...
The Fang Thing.
The Fang Thing. And I'm willing to bet you that on Halloween night, there was 500 pictures taken. It's awesome that she took the time to do it, and her name to have a proclamation. And Leslie, let me, let me read it first, and then we'll do it, okay? Whereas the city of Pressburg strives to maintain and promote the creativity and beauty that resides in the region of the Appalachian Mountains. Whereas the city of Pressburg takes pride in decorating the city for the seasons and major holidays. Whereas Leslie Hines used her own time to carve and decorate the award-winning, record-sized pumpkin, placed at the center of the city to create a new work of art that continues to shine in the beauty that is Pressburg. And now therefore, I L S Stabilizer Mayor of the City of Pressburg do hereby recognize Leslie Hines in her role as an artist and citizen of Pressburg, and pay honor to Leslie Hines. All right. We, uh, we've had a lot going on at the end of the school season and at the holiday season, so we need to get those out of the way. And I don't mean that in a bad way. Uh, next visitor is going to be Darrell Patton. Darrell handles the insurance for us, as you all know, our medical insurance. We've been working, what, a little two and a half weeks here? And it was going to be a substantial raise. And Darrell has negotiated to a very acceptable rate for us, I think, so. He's good to help us.
Just kind of remind the city council, we're coming off of a 15-month, uh, year. Basically, remember we were able to extend the year to, uh, do basically what's called keep a grandfather in the policy. And that's a, that's a term that basically means your policy is not subject to as many of the Affordable Care Act laws. In other words, you want to be grandfathers, don't you? And you all are in that type of policy. I contacted the mayor about two and a half, three weeks ago, and told him that, I told him that they were asking for a 15% rate increase. Actually, it was 17.6. I actually read the form, but... Because I knew, I knew it was not acceptable anyway, so I didn't really get on the detail. So, anyway, we talked, and, uh, I wanted to get an idea of what, uh, that would be fair. Because the last increase we had was single digits also. And for you, for the ones that can remember, this particular group, uh, we kind of baptized, you know, that healthcare by fire right off of that. There's major, major things that went on. And, uh, my negotiation with them is based on, you know, you don't want to run this group off, because if you do that, you'll never get your money back, that you've lost. So, that was my angle that I took with them, saying, "Look, if you treat them reasonable, be fair, they'll renew the plan, and you guys can recover a proper time." And that's what we did. They come back with an 8.5% rate increase, which, to be honest with you, uh, most people would have probably taken that. Anything single digits right now is unbelievable. BD can attest to that. The average increase that's happening for 1-1 of 18 is anywhere from 20 to 50% on group claims. Long story short, we negotiated it down to 5%. And that's 12-month rate guarantee, no change in benefits. And I was shocked when they, I'm just one of these people that I ask for. And if you don't ask, you don't proceed. I told them that we had a city council meeting, if they want to get their numbers where they need to be, then I'll present it. After we move forward.
Any questions?
Well, Darrell, that's, you always came through, and so I'll make a motion to accept this.
I have a motion. I have a second discussion.
Great job.
Be no discussion, or we call it a loop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And the motion passes. Thank you, Darrell.
And I'll see you tomorrow.
We sound ready. Are you coming in tomorrow?
Yes.
Almost embarrassed to be here now, conversation with MBD.
How's our little scene?
I'm sorry.
I'll say that I called around to four other cities of, uh, near the same employee, and the cheapest one I found was 11. So, we beat them by 6%.
Well, another thing too, a lot of the, I deal with a couple other municipalities, and, uh, I don't know, this one is just always seem, they've always been willing to negotiate. The insurance company had, I've got one that's facing a 30% increase. But the bad thing is, the rate we're starting with is already worse. You know, most municipalities, and you can check on this if you want to, through KPO, for instance, they're paying about double what you guys are. It's about double.
Has their claims gone down, or is that the reason?
Yeah, the group, uh...
We have claimed their group up, and they're a lot, their wellness and well-being is a lot better than what it was.
Yeah, the group right now, honestly, is in the best shape I've seen it that I can remember. You know, it's, the group is cleaned up, uh, there's not any people on there that shouldn't be. And it's, it's kept your expense and your bottom line down. We don't have this dual coverage stuff going on like we used to fight all the time.
I did talk to one, uh, one municipality that's got a 27% increase, and they can't negotiate it down. So, we were... Darrell, thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Way to go, Eric.
All right.
That don't work tomorrow, though.
All right, move on. We have a business that wants to speak from the floor. All right, need approval on a bill.
Some who?
I have a motion, need a second. I have a second discussion. All in favor? All opposed. All right, need to prove the 10, 16, 17 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, need a second.
Second.
I have a second discussion. Be no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Unfinished business. Now, this one's going to raise a few eyebrows. Suddenly contract, we're going to start with different off the bat. Suddenly contract, as y'all know, in a meeting with you guys...
You never come to this?
If you don't, it's the same exact order statement that we had in before. There's, there's no use looking at it, because it's going to be a waste of our paper and just preparing it right now, I'm sorry.
But it's not the same time period, seven years?
Yes, everything's the same. If y'all know, I started in May trying to work with them, and then I tried to get them to come on board, and let's get a contract started, some time negotiations. Well, last Friday at about 3:30, I get it laid on my desk, "Suddenly contract." Okay, "Well, we got to get this signed by the end of the year, so we can continue our business with you all." Yeah, I don't work that late. Next thing is, they sent me one by registered mail. "Oh, we got to the end of the year to get this..." No, we don't. We don't have to, we don't have to do that. We're not going to be bullied into it. And just because their lack of effort, and it does not make an emergency on my part, or anybody else's part that I know of. That's just my field, and I hope you can, I think the council will support me on that discussion. It's very long, it's very technical, and it's got a lot of moving parts in it. There are some expert attorneys out there in telecommunications, and in no way, shape, form, or fashion am I saying that Jennifer is not.
I am not an expert in telecommunications.
But this is going to require some expertise in our negotiations, and, uh, I am going to ask that the city council give me some leeway to find an attorney, to try to find some, negotiate this process, and see if I can get somebody that will represent us in the telecommunications contract and franchise agreement. I will entertain a motion on that. I have a motion, need a second. I have a second, any discussion?
Just, I'm not too happy with the seven years. I mean, we did the seven years back because of the houses up on the hill.
Well, what I was down to is, and I hope everybody out here hears this, and please pass word on. We're getting all kinds of complaints on the street, nobody's complaining this summer. I know everybody down at Suddenly kept saying their problem. Okay, and, and I know that some people are, and then they're, they're not acknowledging it or something. I'm not sure what the deal is, but we've got to work out a better deal for the city of Pressburg. We deserve better internet than what we have, 100%. With that being said, I make no bones about it, I've reached out to some other telecommunications networks. They're very interested in working with the city of Pressburg. And we have a lot of rights within our contract here that we're currently working with, that we're not currently working on, but we have, we have rights. We have some rights of condemnation and other things that, uh, we're, we're not afraid to take a big jump yet, are we, Jennifer?
No.
But we're going to do what's right for the citizens of Pressburg, and try to get a good quality network in here so that we can, so that we can enjoy the same, just the same amenities everybody else has. I'll, I'll start looking tomorrow, and I have a couple attorneys in mind. I'll get hold of them, and I'll keep it within reasonable cost. But we do, we do need expert help on this, no, no bones to that. All right, thank you all. Uh, next, power poses. BD? We're on them. I promise you, we're on them. We're going to try to get it done as quick as we can. We are on them.
I'm going to start with the services.
We'll start with that, okay. Building demolition. We've had a complaint on the one building that's up on, uh, up on the block up there behind, uh, behind the brick house, and, uh, as of yesterday, our 30 days is up. By the end of the week, we'll be putting out, um, RFP, RFQ, or maybe just take bits on somebody's dirt mound. That being said, there's a basement in that building. We'll have to fill it back in. So, whoever, whoever looks at it will probably take them all and more than that, and look at it, and give us a price. So, that's just an update on that.
Good.
Any more unfinished business? New business, Mac Board, for us. Y'all should have got, uh, pretty much bio or anything on a couple of them. One is, uh, Valerie Elliott. She works for college. She represents college after we changed the ordinance last time, but we have two people in college. Uh, the second will be Stephanie Richard from Pike County. Stephanie's bio is, she is, is very, very well-versed in arts, fine art. And she also is the extension agent for Pike County. And she's got a lot of knowledge in funding and stuff, and might be, well, not might, but will be a huge asset. And the second will be Chaz Gerhart from Mount County. She's worked at WYMT. She's currently at a pharmaceutical rep. She's very interested in what goes on. She enjoys local art. She enjoys seeing people and the local, local artisans be put forward and be showcased. And so, uh, I get a motion on those.
You want to call them?
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Jody Conley from Kentucky Oxford. He's going to be the representative of Kentucky.
We're going to do all four at once?
Do what, we can do all four at once, or we can do them individually?
I'll make motion, accept all four.
I have a motion and a second to do all four, a discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we need two checking accounts. One of the checking accounts will be for CMH 23. One in, one out. BD, thank you. We want a checking house for CMH 23. To be able to further our research on this project alone, we're going to have some funding. And, uh, the funding will not come from our taxes. It will be donations, but we need a, uh, we need a checking account to be able to run through, so we can be accountable for. And I need a motion.
They're going to be in charge of this again.
There will be, there will be, we will, we will be in charge of the account. I will have to be on every check that's signed. And there's two other gentlemen that have been involved in the planning and stuff. We'll be, that'll be signed as often. So, two of us three have to sign it all through at all times. I have a motion, need a second. Discussion. All in favor of the CMH 23?
Aye.
All opposed. What's up with Sharon?
AML grant.
AML grant money, yes. Need a checking account for the AML grant money. I would tell you right now that, uh, we do have boots on the ground over there. We have, uh, they're doing surveying, and they're doing the environmental analysis right now. So, uh, as soon as we get that in, probably be about another couple of weeks, we'll be able to purchase property from CERSEX. And of course, you all are approving to do that through the AML money. We just need a checking account from the money through.
I'll make that motion, you open.
I have a motion, need a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, approved resolution number fourteen, tax two zero one seven. Don, you're up.
A resolution approving and authorizing assistance agreement between the city of Prestonburg, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide one million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars of loan funds for wastewater system improvements. I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, need a second. I have a second and discussion. Just, uh, for informational purpose, this is the regional waste treatment plant. And which one is it?
This particular one is just approving this for the ten fourteen twenty-eight and Stone Press collecting.
All right. This one going up fourteen twenty-eight?
Fourteen twenty-eight, AML on that time.
All right. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution number one five, tax two zero one seven.
A resolution correcting an original KRS eighty-one point zero four five filing and adopting a modern legal description of territory previously annexed by ordinance.
This is maze branch. There was some discrepancies through the Secretary of State's office. This will correct that and doesn't change statute or anything else, but we just need that resolution to be able to adopt the correct description.
Okay.
I have a motion, need a second.
Aye.
All in fa, or discussion. Is there any discussion on this one?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, resolution number sixteen, tax two zero one seven.
A resolution approving and authorizing the assistance agreement between the city of Prestonburg, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide two million, thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars of loan funds for wastewater system improvements.
That is a regional waste treatment plant. Again!
This particular one is for Stevens Branch, Cliff area and Lower Abbott.
Lower Abbott.
This is for, uh, New Orleans and both of those areas, new customers.
They've been begging for it, haven't they? They sure have.
Motion.
All right, I have a motion, need a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We did the regional waste treatment plant last time.
We did, uh, last, in the past couple of months, we did the, uh, US twenty-three-
Yeah.
Project and probably the preliminary design money for the way, regional wastewater treatment.
Is that going to change everything up through there, Cliff or whatever?
Yes.
Is it?
Illinois will be on the city sewer over in that area. And then, uh, Lower Abbott, we call it Lower Abbott, uh, will be up to about, uh, Mead Branch.
Well, no modifications to those that are already on it, right?
No. Additional and-
Just add to, yes.
Tourism updates. Mitchell, you're up.
All right, thank you. Let me pass these out. We have our two thousand sixteen tourism impact report. And we made this up for each one of you, so the numbers are the best way to prove what we're doing is working. And again, this is for the twenty sixteen year. So the tax number that you see and whatnot inside of there will be on that. At the beginning that you'll see is some of the work that we do. This will be a good example of some of the advertising that we are sending outside of the area. So we hope that you all are in approval with it. We're really trying to focus on the outdoor venture with Sugar Can Mountain Trails, Jenny Wally State Resort Park. And of course, the elk viewing tours. We're really trying to play that back up because it's a huge tourism impact in the winter. And then as well as with our entertainment, because we have music and we have music like no other, a lot of level talent. So we do like to say it is something in the water. Obviously, I didn't drink it because I'm from Berea, so. Something along there changed. Now, when you go over there and start to look on the second page, leave where the numbers come through. And you will see that in two thousand sixteen, Floyd County had a direct impact in tourism, almost fifty million dollars, which is a lot of money. And the reason this has come through is state actually does a formula that takes into accountability with attractions, with kind of what ticket sales and what everyone reports, such as the Mac and Jenny Wally Theater, as well as Jenny Wally State Resort Park on their attractions, but also takes into formula restaurant sales as well as the overnight occupancy rates in our hotels. And we do have five right here in Prestonburg. So what they do is they actually times that percentage that they find up and they times it by one and a half percent, which is actually relatively low. In the state of Tennessee alone, they times theirs by seven. So Kentucky has a very, very realistic, if anything, our numbers may be a little higher than what the state actually shows. So that is something good to think about. And as far as indirect impact, it almost is, goes up to seventy million, which we did not show you there. We are technically, of course, in the Kentucky Appalachian region. The state has nine regions that are set up. And we are the third largest tourism in our region. So Ashland, of course, number one because of sixty-four darn highways when they get through. Can't compete with that. And then Pikeville, of course, in Pike County would be the second largest and Prestonburg's number three. And we are actually really close to the second spot. So I would like to bring us on up and we're going to get there one day. We've got a lot of great happenings taking part and it's being noticed across the state. Um, we had a point four three percent increase from two thousand fifteen. And our two thousand seventeen numbers, the state, since they have this formula, will come out a lot quicker than what they've done this time. So hopefully by April, May, I will be able to give you a report of what two thousand seventeen was. And as far as our in-house records are showing, we are actually up, which is a great thing. So let's hope that we can maybe get almost a whole percent increase in tourism impact. And then local taxes that were generated through our office in two thousand sixteen was nine hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. And I'm sure there's some odd things in there, but when Brooke and I were doing the report, that's what we kind of rounded it to. And then this is the most important thing for residents to really understand and kind of take part. We all have pride in Prestonburg and Floyd County. But folks really need to understand that tourism provides, each Floyd County household saves one thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars that they would have to pay in taxes otherwise. So that is a huge impact that we are doing for locals right here in this area. And the better we do, the better it does for our local residents.
Those taxes were asked you to, check the question. Basically what you're saying is for us to be able to have everything we've got, if we didn't have those tourism dollars, it would be almost twelve hundred dollars for each household to keep it up.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's a substantial impact.
Yes, it is. It is, it is a huge impact. So what we do matters with your all's support. I would like to thank you all as well because you all put several of my board members in place, all of them over the time. And we have a really great team that's working really well together. And we, within the last two years, this year will be two years since I've been here. We have really turned around and totally changed kind of our whole idea of what we've been doing. And it is getting recognized across the state. When you go to the third page there, it just kind of has us at the bottom, has some of our honors. Um, Mr. Stapleton told you all, because it happened the last week in October, we actually placed three of our awards for advertising that we did in the Kentucky Travel Industry Association, which a good analogy is it's like the Grammys for Kentucky tourism. And we got the best of the best for digital marketing. So we beat Louisville, we beat Elizabeth Town, we beat cities that are known all over. And Little Prestonburg, we sat there and we did it because there really is something great about our community. And outside judges were actually brought in to see it and they got the message that we're trying to get across. So hashtag build a bird.
Yeah, and they, they deserve a hand for that because they really did it.
Instead of saying, you'll be noticing a lot of changes that we'll be doing next year. We will be getting ready hopefully by the beginning of January. We will have a new travel planner for Prestonburg. We are also going to start going, we always have promoter coaches, but now I'm really wanting to start in on going up our meetings and conferences that will be there. So we have a meeting planner as well. We have a new map that's going to be out that will have Prestonburg, but it will also have a lot of our hiking trails. Because what's worse than anything is we don't have these things and we're advertising folks to come out and see the beautiful area of Prestonburg and Jenny Wally. But I myself have gotten lost out there a few times. So, you know, it happens. So for the Preston challenge, we'll be doing that. But yeah, this is what's going on and I just want to give you all an update and it's something to be proud of. It really is. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Thank you, Mitchell.
All right, do we have any other new business? It's not really new business, sort of unfinished business, but I did get to sign the deed on the community center. So we, we do own the commu, own the property to initiate a community center. Okay, we're going to move the, uh, we got, we have to go into executive session. Uh, we have no choice. We need to discuss this stuff. So under KRS-
I have to.
No, I'm just kidding. Under KRS sixty-one one eight one oh, subsection one, and that will be subsection C for litigation, subsection B for real estate, and subsection E for a personnel issue. If everyone please, uh, exit to room for a few minutes. We'll have a quick discussion. It shouldn't take too long. That little bean, that was a game, saying you're good to go. All right, any motion to come out of executive session?
I'll move it, second.
Motion need a second, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Any coming out of the executive session?
We'll make the motion that the mayor, uh, negotiate on some property, uh, fill it out, see what can happen, come back to the city council with it at this discussion.
I have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, that being said, we have nothing else before the council on the agenda. Anybody have anything from the floor? All right, this is just for everybody's knowledge. In about twenty minutes, you want to meet us over at the city, uh, over at the Archer Park. They're going to have a dry run with the lights. We have over a million lights this year. You're welcome to drive through and look at it. Remember it's a dry run. If there's mistakes, there's mistakes. Well, we need to be prepared to, uh, need to be prepared to look for faults and please tell them that, so they can correct them before Thursday night. Now, this is for the council.
I need a adjournment.
I have a motion adjourned, need a second. Discussion. All in favor?